We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is our regular meeting of the Barstown City Council. And I guess it's exactly six o'clock. This is not a test. We don't have any, I don't think anyone here to address the council this evening, I don't think. He don't get up.
He always has something to say.
All right, we'll start with our first item on our agenda is a service request from CNH Properties for an apartment complex. I'll call on Jessica Filiatro to talk to us about this request.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a request for CNH, which is Greg Cahoe, I believe is the developer behind CNH. For an apartment complex, there's five proposed apartment buildings that will have 18 units per building on the corner of Woodline Road and Filiatro Lane. And in order to serve these buildings, there is a sewer main extension required. And that's what has brought this request to the council. So it's the standard procedure for these types of developments in order to send the application to the Division of Water and Sewer Control. And obviously, if the council agrees, it will become upon its completion, you know, I would recommend that we include that into our sewer system for acceptance and service. It does not require a water main extension, as there are water mains on both Woodline and Filiatro. So it can be served with the existing mains.
Is there anybody in the city? A lot of multifamily around here already. Okay, is there no questions for Jessica? Ask for motion to approve the request of CNH Properties as submitted by their engineer, Robin Mills.
So moved, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion, Councilman Williams, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Doz, any other discussion? All in favor, six o'clock, say aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Next, we have some requests, a couple of walks, I guess. We'll start with this Barstown City Schools. This is a repeat from previous, I guess Chief Cressig, you want to speak to us about this?
Yeah, they do this every year and actually usually Chief Manley, myself, and some of our other public safety will go walk with them. So that's a, it's a pretty quick, easy walk that they do for kids.
All right, you see, I just see these ideas, information already attached to this calendar from a traffic standpoint. So if I could, I need a motion to approve the request for their walk for success on May the 4th for the Barstown City Schools.
Make the motion, Mayor.
Motion by Councilman Hibbs, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Shekels. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, donation request from the Nelson County Community Clinic, then they also have a 5K a walk request also. I'm trying to remember who, which council member is the sponsor of this?
It's me, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Doz, you would like to speak to this?
Absolutely, and I don't think that there were anyone available from Nelson County Community Clinic that could make it to the council meeting tonight, so they asked me to speak. And I think everyone here is familiar with, you know, what Nelson County Community Clinic stands for and what they're about. You know, to provide public access to, you know, basic health, dental, vision care, and they even help with prescription drug assistance and that type of advocacy. They've asked for $6,000 from our community grant fund, and I think that, you know, we talked with Aaron, I know Gary has already spoken with Aaron, we've got, I think, $19,000 or something that left, if this is deducted from that grant fund. Their history shows, and I'm sure all of you all have seen that before, I mean, it's been as much as $10,000, I think, one year, but it's generally been around five for the last couple of years. So I just wanted to open it up for discussion, and they requested six. Wanted to open it up, discussion with the council and see if you all think that's appropriate or can do here.
Well, I know for a fact it's a good benefit for the working pool, the people that do work and may not be, have a position that they can afford. The company they may work for does not provide group health insurance, and of course, any company that may, doesn't qualify them to be able to afford the healthcare. So I know it's helped a lot of people. I personally would have a problem with what they request.
I'd be in favor of it as well, they certainly provide a wonderful service to the county.
Absolutely. And aye as well, Mayor, I'm in favor of the $6,000.
You're the sponsor.
I think that was the same, right?
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Councilman Doz, you want to make a motion to approve the request as presented?
Absolutely, I would like to make a motion to approve the donation request by Nelson County Community Clinic for the amount of $6,000.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilman, second by Councilman Buckman. Any further discussion? All in favor, six o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I don't know if Susan could, Margaret Neal was the...
She's recent, I'm the attorney, I service the volunteer attorney for the board. She recently took over, like earlier this year, and Margaret is still there, but she's working more with the prescription benefit capacity.
Is this a Susan Neal who's working the catch?
Yes, it is.
Okay, this is followed, they also have a request for a road closure. They're having their run for the health of it on June 25th. They've asked for a permission for a road closure. There's, well, actually both of them tonight are a little different as far as the route than we normally get, but it starts here at Xavier Drive and goes down Fifth and up Veo, and then right on Fourth, and kind of works its way back to here, down John Fitch, and so forth. That's on Saturday, June 25th. And I think this has been done in years past as well.
Mayor, do you need a motion for that approval also?
Yes, please.
I'd also like to make the motion to approve the road closure for the 5K run walk on June 25th.
Okay, then the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Williams. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, six o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a minutes from our previous meeting to March 22nd. Is there any additions or corrections? If not, we'll approve that by unanimous consent. And now for the feature of the evening. CFO, Aaron Bowles, is going to give us our finance report from March. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor. You got it up in your attachment, we'll just get right into it. General Fund continues to outperform budget expectations on the revenue side with another strong month for, in March. Total revenue for the year stands at $9.6 million, or 85% of budget. Our occupational license fees and net profit fees had another strong month, they totaled[571.14][571.54]$870,000. That brings occupational license fees for the year to $4.7 million, or 83% of the budget already. And then we still have, first quarter filings should start coming in to help round out and have a good, strong finish to the fiscal year. And I did some research, just looking back at year-over-year performance, and I would anticipate our occupational license revenue to come in at around $6.3 to $6.5 million this fiscal year, so that's 111% to 115% of budget.
That's good, because those two people sitting beside you are going to spend about that much.
Net profit fees are running around 56% of budget, or $488,000 for the year. That filing season really officially kicks off this Friday, the 15th. And I just began breaking that revenue line out separately in FY '21, so I don't really have a good amount of data to kind of give you guys a forecast, plus our COVID-related delays in the past where we extended the filing, so that created some overlap in year-to-year numbers. I do know we finished FY '21 just over a million dollars of revenue there, so we budgeted $875,000 this year, so we should, I'm anticipating that will surpass that and be well into the million-dollar range. Other items on the chart there, just some other tax revenue of $186,000. And then we invoiced for our resource officer at the Barstown Schools for his work through November of the last year, so you see that revenue there, $17,900. Moving on to expenses, expenditures were steady in the month of March with nothing really major note there. Health insurance is up throughout both funds, we had to add some money to our claims account, $250,000, so that was significantly increased for the general fund this month. Some other things that happened, police finished up their property room, they did HVAC install and some insulation to finish that project, and then they had, further over on the chart, they purchased some, I believe they were tasers, $11,367, and the majority of that will be covered by a grant that Joe was working on. Year-to-date expenditures, 67% of budget, or $7.4 million. That leaves net revenue for the general fund about $2.2 million so far this year.
Aaron, on that health insurance, you distribute that mostly just to claims?
Yes. So we have a separate claims account that covers all of our health insurance, we're a self-insured entity, so as that dwindles down, I've budgeted so much money coming from the combined utilities and the general fund to help cover the cost of those claims.
Is it okay to ask what a client, is it okay to ask what they like, be, to be, how much money a client?
It's every insured individual with the city, so anytime they go to the doctor, they'll bill our provider, so it ranges from, I don't know, it ranges from $100 to $60,000.
Reinsurance that kicks in once a claim...
We have a stock loss at $75,000, so once, once an individual reaches that, then it'll start being reimbursed by the stock loss provider. Combined utilities revenue continues with their steady monthly pattern, $3.8 million coming in, with 95% of that coming from service charges. On the chart, it's normal stuff from month to month. The only thing different is we had interest earned, we had some maturities of investments that matured out, $9,000, just a little over $9,000 in interest revenue coming in. Year-to-date, general, or combined utilities is 68% of budget, $33 million for the year.
Aaron, are most of our delinquencies from COVID called us?
Well, yes, delinquencies are back down to normal. They're actually better than they have been in the past. They do fluctuate from month to month, just depending upon timing of, I guess, the way people pay, but I do keep track of, I've charted out the past three fiscal years of delinquencies, so I can have a running idea of where we're at this time last year and the year before. And both cycle, billing cycles are trending better in delinquencies. All the, all the assistance money that came in, that's, that really helped kick in. I mean, not only did our delinquencies go down, but our collections improved as far as bad debt collections.
Thank you.
Expenditures, as a whole, for the combined utilities were just over $4 million. Year-to-date, we're sitting at 62% of budget. Again, that's artificially low, just because of the high dollar of capital improvement projects that have yet to be completed. Net revenue in the combined utilities is $1.8 million as of the end of March. And then you can detail out, just looking at some of these individual utilities, electric, 168% of budget, nothing too major of note there. Water, sewer, garbage, 151% of budget, again, low because of the larger amounts of capital projects that are, haven't started there yet. One item of note, the transfer to depreciation fund, I did an internal move to clear up some accounting balance sheet issues that I was seeing on our lagoon fund and depreciation fund. So depreciation funds now sitting at $500,000, and our lagoon fund is now at $510,000. This $435,000 transfer was a budget line item in sewers expenditures.
Aaron, along this line, me and cable internet department today, and I think we've got, just so you know, we've got like four contractor block divorce, a lot of this expansion out into unserved areas in the county, and then rebuilding a lot of our older, you know, analog stuff with fiber, you know, within the city limits, where some of our oldest stuff, I think there's quite a bit of work going on in that regard. So much so that we have to have four contractors working on that to keep up with the demand.
Yeah, and that's in our cable internet department, so they're running about 71% of budget, they are the highest, highest utility as far as utilization of their expenses. They have large projects and they can run them through a lot faster than the other departments can. One thing of note, head end improvement line at $106,000, if you remember, that's $162,000 bid project that we awarded back in December, I believe, and it's a new fiber termination area that our head end to get speeds increased. That's it for the funds. The last page there, I did make some moves with some excess funds, invested those out. So the city had been sitting on substantial excess cash balances for a while now, but I've been kind of waiting on the Fed to start moving rates. We were in such a low rate environment that I didn't really want to tie up our cash necessarily in investment vehicles that weren't really earning anything. So March, the Fed moved, they went up 25 basis points, and there's expected to be up to nine more moves throughout the next year to year and a half. So I thought now was a good time to start, so with some of the excess cash, I moved them out, and what I did was I kind of created a ladder approach to our investments, and I was trying to accomplish two things with this. One, I wanted to make it to where cash was available at different times based upon anticipated needs, and also wanted to have that ladder able to reinvest to catch the rising rate environment, so as one would roll off, hopefully it reinvests into a higher rate. So before we start looking at each fund's investment activity, I just wanted to let you know, you know, all these funds, all these are unassigned or unrestricted funds, and the term and type of investment that they're sitting in doesn't restrict the fund for any purpose, or this money for any purpose. It still remains a current asset and will perform, much like cash does on our balance sheet, so there's no real restriction here. It's just putting our cash to work and making us a little bit of money. All right, so on the general fund, we had about, really we have a little bit more than this, but I've moved $5,000, $5 million out and diverted that into certificate of deposit investments at Abound Credit Union. That leaves me a cash balance, operating balance of about $3.7 million, so it's still, general fund's still well-funded to anticipate any cash needs well into the future. And as you can see on the chart, or on the handout there, I laddered it into three, nine, and 13-month investments, so not anticipating any need for large sums of cash out of the general fund, I kept larger sums in a longer term to gain more interest, and then the lower, shorter terms are smaller amounts. So hopefully, as that one, that first $1 million in three months, it just renews, and then we'll catch, the Feds due to meet in May, they're talking raising it 50 basis points, hopefully by the time this very first investment terms in June, the bank will have raised their rates, it'll reinvest at that rate, that higher rate, and just continue to perform as those rates increase throughout the next year or two. So over the next year, we'll see approximately $42,000 of interest revenue if these continue to stay, even, and that's just calculated staying at the same rate, so if the rates go up, we'll make more money. Year-to-date, the general fund's seeing about $2,600 in interest revenue, so it's going to be a significant improvement. And the combined utilities, we already had existing certificates of about $7.5 million. I took about an additional $3 million from the combined utilities and put into investment vehicles at Abound again. This one is tiered similar, 3, 6, 9, and 13-month, but I reversed the tier, so my shorter terms have higher dollar amounts, so when, so I have more cash available more frequently. So as some of these projects start to ramp up and I need cash, these investments will roll off, and if I need it, I can pull it to actually use it for capital improvement projects. And those rates range from 25 basis points all the way up to 1.15. Over the next year, combined utilities should see about $53,000 of interest revenue. The next one down, our operation and maintenance reserve, there's no real set dollar amount for that by ordinance that we need to have. Ever since I've been here, it's been about $2.8 million. I took some of the combined utilities money and added it into reserve here, increasing the operation and maintenance reserve to $4 million, and that's in a 13-month CD. That CD itself will term out and earn about just under $50,000. So the general fund, combined utilities, and operation, maintenance, reserve, those are all sitting at Abound Credit Union. I have, they pledged as collateral to cover these, because anything over $250,000 isn't, isn't secured by the, by the FDIC, or in their case, the NCUA. They've pledged $24.7 million worth of mortgage-backed securities to ensure that these deposits are covered in case they ever have a problem. They won't ever have a problem, so those, those deposits or investments are well-covered. The last item there is the sub-fund investments, we had some extra cash in some of those sub-funds that listed there, I moved those out into US Treasuries, they are yielding a little bit better. That market fluctuates frequently, so I just caught it on a really good day. By the end of the term, those, those four different funds, we'll see about $22,000 of interest revenue. In all, $20.3 million was invested, and we'll see about $167,000 of interest revenue for the next year. There are other investment vehicles out there that cities and municipalities are now allowed to utilize, but you get into bond markets and stock markets and things like that, and I'm just not quite ready. It'd be higher yield, but I'm just not quite ready to move the city in that direction.
Aaron, I think you already answered the only question that I have, and as far as the security that, the collateral that they've offered to back these investments, is there an advantage of staying with the same credit union for all the investments, or?
Well, yes, because they're local, and I can go sit down and talk to somebody. And they're the only financial institution in the area that's going to pay me that kind of money. All the banks are much lower, much lower than that, so that's why I utilize them, but as far as, it's really just convenience, as far as, and I already have a working relationship with them. Thank you.
Aaron, in the collateral requirements, some issues sometimes with some nights?
Yes, right, banks, right, banks have...
They're up so much?
Yes, right. It changes the equity structure of banks and their ability to pay dividends, whereas a credit union doesn't have that restriction of stuff.
I think Aaron also knew, this, you know, it's a very healthy balance sheet, but Aaron's point earlier, you know, our combined utility budget's about 48, 49 million, so a lot of this cash will get used towards these big capital projects, not only now, but in the coming budget. We've been working on our budget here the last few months, and we're starting our meetings, and I can tell you, Jessica can verify this, that a lot of the new budget is even more capital projects that are coming our way as we're, all the growth is going on here, their inflation is, hits us just like it hits everybody else with these projects, and everything's gone up, so a lot of these estimates we get on paper don't turn out to be the same once they're bid out either, so you can expect some of that to change once these projects get bid and let, so we've spent months and months and months working on what's coming down the road, even for next year, and some of these will carry over to next year. So we need this in order to be able to bond and/or get financing, you know, for these projects. They look at us just like they look at other borrowers, they want, you know, some money in, in the projects many times to offset the amount of money we're going to borrow on those.
So having them in CDs, that doesn't affect your liquidity then, they don't look at it any different if it's in that investment?
Right, especially its term, most, the highest terms is 13-month, which is really still a considerable term.
And we do get grants, but a lot of times there's a 20% match on the grants too, just like the sidewalk grant, we're seeing some of that right now, working on, so it's good to be in this position to be able to handle some of this.
Great job, Aaron.
And Aaron, if we needed to, you could break the covenant, right? And get money.
But that, that was my goal with the ladder kind of approach, is to be able to, within a three-month period, know that, okay, I'm going to need to, when this matures, I'm going to need to pull it.
If you don't need it, you can just reinvest it.
Correct.
Any other questions for Aaron? Thank you, good, good report. Okay, anybody, any, do we have any committee meetings scheduled anytime soon?
Well, I did want to mention, I don't know if everyone saw that, but we had a cable electric committee meeting that was due to be today, but it's moved because we were supposed to have the hearing, and then the hearing got postponed, so. So it's been rescheduled to the 10th, is that?
I don't think Eric suggested a specific date yet. He wanted to wait, he kind of timed it out with the way the budget's information is available.
Is there, back to Mark? I don't think the hearing was moved to this.
No, the hearings is 10th.
No, I'm sorry, the hearing's the 10th, yeah.
Oh, is that what you were saying?
No, no, I was asking about the electric, cable.
I think the hearing got moved to the 10th.
The hearing is now the 10th.
That was at the request of the applicants.
Yes.
Okay, I guess we'll let everybody know when that is rescheduled for. And then we do have Cemetery Dean, one grave for Larry Smith, we will approve that by unanimous consent. And then, do any of the council members have anything to bring before the council this evening? Just now.
Just want to remind everybody about the Easter event, that the city and the Recreation Department is sponsoring on Saturday. It starts at 10 o'clock right down here in front of the rec department. Daniel and Steven and Janice have done a wonderful job of organizing everything. We took 3,000 eggs out to the Go Center, and the Go Center is stuffing those for us, so that's been a good project to work together with them on, and we're supposed to pick those up in the morning. So, and then we had the coloring contest as well, and as of today, we've had 94 entries, so I think that's a good public relations thing for us to do.
Is there an age limit on Easter? Just taking me stuffing those eggs up.
So pray for good weather Saturday.
Okay, anybody else have anything to bring before the council this evening? And my only update, just to kind of, a little more follow-up on the budget work, we've got our general fund kind of roughed in, and next week we'll be meeting individually with our department heads to go over their budgets, and then the combined utilities, as I say, it's a really large budget, it takes a lot more work to get that put together, but we hope to have that completed and then in your all's hands, I guess, full budget next month, we'll have plenty of time to work on that and get it ready for our first and second readings for that for the coming fiscal year. Okay, I don't have anything else, anyone else have anything to bring before us this evening? Well, if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Williams, there's a second, second by Councilman Vibbs. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried, we are adjourned.